Hello everyone. Hello. Um, so today we are having the regional dialogue town hall meeting. Um, I think one of the things I really need to do is um, I gotta invite some people to watch. So. Yeah. Um, I'm trying to see how this goes. So this is the first time we are doing this. We've never done this before. Let me know what you think about if you can hear me. Uh, I may have to pause this video a bit. Because. I can't seem to hear. Okay, so Abraham is here, right? Yeah. I'm trying to be sure. Okay, Abraham is here. Good. Um, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to um, the regional youth dialogue town hall meeting. Um, for me, um, this, this, it's, it's the first time we're doing something like this. And I wanna thank everyone who has been working on the sustainable development goals in their community. Um, I wanna thank everyone who has signed up uh, for the Youth Day event. And it's, it's great to have you. Hello, Edenwa. Thank you for joining. Thank you for joining. Um, so many of us have had questions, like even for me, um, there've been so many questions for me too because I've, I've been asking myself, like, it's, we started the Sustainable Development Goals in two thousand and fifteen. And for many of us, you knew it, it was usually called um, the Millennium Development Goals. And now we have the SDGs and it's for fifteen years. Between two thousand and fifteen till now, it's um, it's already four years, right? So what are we doing? We have less than, say, eleven years to go. What's Nigeria doing? And if you go all over the world, you would know the saying that for us to make the sustainable development goals happen, it depends on young people, young people like me, young people like you, and this is why we are um, we are calling together every one of us to, to work towards a youth regional dialogue. Why are we having a regional dialogue? Um, because uh, because one of the, sorry, I was just checking out Edenwa's comment. One of, one of the things we, we, we really need to look at is how can we as young people in Nigeria take advantage for the Sustainable Development Goals? How can we be um, more active in, in, in the process of ensuring that the localization of the SDGs? And that's one of the reasons why we started the Nigerian Youth SDGs Network in two thousand and seventeen. Um, before we started the network in two thousand and seventeen, we had um, a regional consultation in Lagos with the support of the United Nations Information Center. We also had another consultation in Abuja um, with the support of uh, the Danish Embassy. So in, in March two thousand and seventeen, we had a consultation in Lagos. In July two thousand and seventeen, we had another consultation in Abuja. So when we put up all of these consultations together, um, one of the things we came up with, uh, one of the things the young people in that consultation said was there was a need to ensure that we have one, a coalition of youth-led organization working together for the Sustainable Development Goals. And then the other thing was that doesn't, there's a need to also have a youth SDG summit because Nigeria had never had a youth SDG summit. So in August of two thousand and seventeen, we had the first ever youth SDG summit in, in Nigeria. And um, it was, it was good because we had, we had about four hundred to five hundred young people from different parts of Nigeria. We all traveled down to Lagos for this event. And um, one of the things that was striking was that after it, everyone started saying, oh, we need this coalition to really work. We need this coalition to work. And that's why we started the Nigerian Youth SDGs Network. And one of the things we wanna do is, we wanna go all, all out about resourcing youth. We understand that there are youth leaders out there, youth leaders who, uh, who need enough resource um, to be able to do well in their craft. We, we, usually that's who um, are passionate about advocacy and then they don't even know how to go about it. Usually that's what I'm thinking, how can I even take action? What's the SDGs all about? How can I volunteer my time to ensure that we have a better nation, to ensure that by two thousand and thirty, all of the things I went through, that there was no light, um, I didn't have access to good food, there was no quality education, bad roads, um, access to justice. How can I ensure that all of these things work by two thousand and thirty? So that's why we started the Nigerian Youth SDGs Network, to give you access to all of these tools. And because one of the things I always say is that as young people, we are co-creators of progress. We are the ones that are going to bring up solutions to the problem that Nigeria is facing. And if we keep quiet and we start and we keep complaining, nothing good will happen. And that's why we need to take positive action for the Sustainable Development Goals, especially in this nation. We have over two hundred million Nigerians. And out of these two hundred million, about seventy million to eighty million are young people between the ages of fifteen and twenty-four. Or let me say between fifteen and thirty. So it is me and you that has the energy, the desire to make a better country. So if you take action today, it means that you are laying the foundation for a sustainable future, not just for yourself, but for your country, for your family, for your local government, for your children that you will give birth to. By two thousand and thirty, I would have, my children, they would have, maybe I'll, I'll, I'll be married by then. And my children will probably be in primary or in secondary school, depending. But, oh, they will be in primary school by then. So it's important that I take action because I don't want my children to go through the same Nigeria I am going through right now. And why are we having the regional dialogue? Because we want to activate the power of young people in the north, in the south, in the east, in the west of Nigeria for the SDGs. And I'm sure most, most of us will know about what's happening all over the world, the Fridays for Future, where a young girl, seventeen-year-old from, from Belgium, Greta by name, is taking action for the Sustainable Development Goals. So you also, you need to take action. And also in, in September, in New York, there's going to be a gathering again. There's going to be an SDG summit. And every nation is going to be coming up, talking about their um, voluntary national um, review. I think next year, in two years' time, it should be Nigeria's turn again. We'll have to go and say, oh, this is what we have done for the SDGs. So for Youth Day in um, August ten, this is what we are planning and this, I'm, I'm going to let you know. We want to have two thousand young people gathered together simultaneously in different locations of Nigeria. And we are going to be asking you questions around the SDGs in your state. What is working? What do you think we need to make work? How can we bring um, decision-makers to the table? What are examples of solutions that are happening in your community, maybe in respect to education? Um, there's, I, I know you know of someone in Lagos, uh, who in, for primary schools, they don't, they don't pay money for their fees. They actually use um, recycled um, PET plastics. So all the pet bottles is what they use as their school fees. So what can we do? What kind of solutions can we take? Because if we want to talk about quality education, quality education requires money. Quality education requires money. So if we can bring up innovative solutions together, then we are sure that we can achieve the Sustainable Development Goals. There are some people who are out there who are using um, solar to also help. So what can we do? What is working in your community? What examples of, what stories of Sustainable Development Goals action do you have? That we can present to the world in general that this is what young people in Nigeria, they are doing for the SDGs. It's not just we sitting down saying, oh, the government does not care, um, the government is not doing anything. No. We also, we need to take action. So from the regional dialogue, there are some things we are going to do. Uh, one of the first things we are going to do is that we are going to be creating a strategic roadmap for Nigeria in um, working with young people for the SDGs. So it's going to be a two-year strategic roadmap, which will make available to everybody within the corridors of power, both in Nigeria and outside of Nigeria, to know that young people have gathered together, two thousand voices are saying, this is what we think we should do. This is how it should go. Another thing we're also going to be doing come August ten is uh, we're going to be having a youth declaration. The youth declaration is going to be speaking on um, what we young people want. Um, I will call it our, our demand for a better now. Um, it's about what actions, concrete actions we need to take right now to ensure by two thousand and thirty that we have a pro- progressive and sustainable Nigeria. And um, one of the questions people would ask is, okay, what states is all of this action going to happen? As you would notice very well, when you signed up to volunteer, um, you'll see that we only have fifteen states. So we, we had fifteen states because we didn't, we don't know what other states to pick. So from, from, from the way people have been registering, we've been able to pick, come up with five more states. So these five more states uh, added up to the fifteen, so we're having twenty-six states for the, for, for this regional dialogue. And then we picked, we make sure that we picked at least four states from every region of Nigeria, from the north, sorry, five, from the north, south, east and west. So we have five states that we are going to be hosting this regional dialogue. And how are we going to do it? It's not, I'm not going to come to Kano, or I'm not going to come to Rivers, or I'm not going to come to um, Emo. Even though I'd love to come to Emo, or I would have loved to be in um, Bauchi, or Adamawa, or Abuja. It would be nice, but I have to be in Lagos. So it is now every one of us here as young people that are going to do this work together. The reason why it is Nigeria. Nigeria as a whole, not just um, say maybe it's a Lagos team or it's an Abuja team. I know sometimes people always ask that question. Why is it only happening in Lagos? Why is it only happening in Abuja? Now, we are taking it to every state of Nigeria. At least twenty out of thirty-six is past Mark now. If you get to twenty-five, thirty-six, you pass. So that's, that's what we are doing. When we have enough resource, we are going to go to other states. So I know some of the questions people would ask is, okay, what's the theme? The theme for this Youth Day is amplifying the voices of youth for the SDGs in Nigeria. Why are we amplifying? One of the things people say about us, Nigerian youth, is that we talk too much. And we like jamboree. We talk too much, we do not act. So we want to make them understand that beyond our talking too much, we also want to start acting. We wanna be able to be the ones to create the roadmap. We wanna say, government, this is what you're supposed to do, policymakers, this is what you are supposed to do. We are doing it for you right now. Now you don't have any excuse not to listen to the voice of youth. And then we're also going to be presenting this, our findings at the UN in, in September. So we've already, we are working, we, we already have some partners who are going to be supporting us, uh, supporting us with resourcing, with funding, um, with um, with capacity to, to be able to resource youth like you and I for the SDGs. Because I know most of us are passionate. But so oftentimes, we don't even know how to deploy this, our passion. So we're going to have people who come up, we, we'll have webinars like this, that people will teach us how to, maybe how to tell your story better, how to write a mission statement for your organization, somebody that will tell you something as simple as how to go about um, advocacy. How do you lobby governments? How do you advocate for, 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 for the cause you are passionate about? Then the next thing we're also going to be working on is, we're going to be working on two kits. So we have some guys who are already in a special place, who are working on two kits, two kits on what actions can you take if you are passionate about SDG one? What action can you take if you are passionate about SDG two? What actions can I take in my little, in my rural community somewhere in Latvia, in my rural community somewhere in um, say in Bayelsa, somewhere in Quara? What action can I take that will not cost me so much money to ensure that, 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 that is also adding to, to, to the achievement of the SDGs in Nigeria? Because one of the things we need to do is to tell everyone. If we do not tell everyone about the SDGs, people will not know. Another thing we'll also be working on is, how can we bring people from, from Nollywood, people from Nigerian music industry? How can we bring people from all over the place that are doing so well in their industry to, to, to talk about the SDGs, to become SDGs ambassadors? We're also going to be looking at, how can we get more money into our campaign? Because all of these things we are doing, some of us are using our funds. How can we get access to resources? What kind of um, what kind of businesses can we start that would help us to be able to propagate the SDGs better in Nigeria? So that's what the regional dialogue will be all about. It's going to be a beautiful opportunity for every one of us to take up our leadership skills. It's going to be a beautiful opportunity for every one of us to see what we can do. And it's, it's wonderful to see people who are joining. I see some people who have joined from, someone has joined from Kaduna. So it's nice. It's, it's a nationwide um, event right now. And so going on to somebody would ask me from here, what's next? After we have gathered together two thousand young people, what are we going to do next? All of the reports that we have from the different centers across Nigeria, we are going to compile them together. We're going to compile them together and we are going to take them, uh, we're going to have another kind of high-level meeting. We are going to invite some special people from across different states to join this high-level meeting. We are, we're already saying, we're going to send out an email um, invite to, to the Vice President of Nigeria. We are going to send out um, an email invite to the Senate President of Nigeria, to the House of Representatives, and people in key decision-making in Nigeria. So that's, that's, that's what we're going to do. That's what we are really going to do. And the reason why we wanna do all of this is that so that we all, we understand that our voices count. Every one of us right here, our voices count. No more should we say, oh, it's Nigeria. Nobody's voice, our voice, we count. I'm happy that um, what, what can I see? I'm happy that Chelsea is joining us. Um, Chelsea's, Chelsea's going to be one of the people who is going to be helping us um, take most of our, all of the decisions we have made to New York. Um, it's going to be helping us a lot because one of the things we wanna do is to also host a side event in New York. So a lot of us are going to be working together. We need to make people know that beyond the razzmatazz, beyond all the shouts, you know, the social media banter, that young people in Nigeria, we mean business. So um, that's what this year's Youth Day is going to be all about. And I want us to prepare because it will require us to use resources, it will require your time. And for me, I always say something that I will never put my hands into something I know will not yield progress. So guys, this is a wonderful time for all of us to make history together. It's a wonderful time for us to make um, the voice of Nigeria to really count on the global stage. And also, I, I know most of us know about the SDG stars that we are showcasing right now. So the SDG stars we are showcasing right now, it's about the innovation that youths around Nigeria are taking for the SDGs. I'm sure for most of them, you don't even know them. Probably somebody is somewhere in Bono taking an action. Somebody is somewhere in Enugu taking an action. Somebody is somewhere in, in Kogi taking an action. You don't even know them. So all of these actions is what we are, we are spotlighting. On the twelfth of August, we are going to do a publication of hundred top actions by young people between two thousand and um, fifteen till now for the SDGs. So it's going to be about sharing their stories because there's a lot of power in storytelling. So by that we share stories, they will know that beyond all of the crimes, beyond all of the negatives you hear about Nigeria, something great is happening in this country. And young people are taking the lead. If Nigeria is great, if we meet education, if we meet um, clean and affordable energy, then we'll have a Nigeria that we love. Every one of us will be able to live peacefully in this Nigeria. And I wanna urge us young people, let's nobody tell you that you cannot make change happen. Let nobody tell you that. And please, we cannot do this alone. You cannot make change happen alone. You all need the power of, um, we all need the power of a combined youth force to make change to happen. So August ten is the regional dialogue. It will be happening across Nigeria. We've already set up all of the questions that we are going to ask. There will be opportunities for people to share their stories on that day. There will be opportunities for people to share their solutions on that day. We are also making sure that our website is able to contain every of the action that young people are having simultaneously across Nigeria on that day. So for instance, if you registered for um, say Kano, and you want to know where your location is in Kano, all you need to do is um, to click on Kano on our website. And then you'll find the location of where your event is happening. Also, we are going to create a toolkit for all of, for everyone who has signed up um, to be a volunteer. We are going to create a toolkit that you can use to, to, to get resources. We are also going to be creating a special um, group for you. Because one of the things we did is that we went into partnership with Facebook. So Facebook has given us a resource whereby we can handle all of our communications for free. So we may end up not even using WhatsApp. We're going to be using something called Workplace by Facebook. So that's where we'll be having all our communications. So all of the communications team, well, in the twenty states will be on that group. And the reason why we are doing this is that so that for seamless communication, before somebody will say, oh, I can't find information, and also for training, because Facebook also takes lesser data. And if we also need to do offline trainings, we're also going to do it. Another thing we are working on is that, we are working with the Nigerian Network of NGOs. Um, the Nigerian Network of NGOs, they have different NGOs across Nigeria, big-time NGOs. Those ones are going to be supplying, supporting us with venue for this work. And other people who are thinking of us, we also have other people that we are going to be working on with. As time goes on, you will get to find them um, on our website. Also, one of the things we, we will also be doing is that um, we would look out for how we can increase the level of engagement between young people and um, the government and the private sector. You and I know that one of the things we face is access to jobs. So we are going to look out, how can we facilitate this engagement? Because one thing I would always say is that if we as young people come up with one unique solution, imagine if one person comes up with a solution that can employ one thousand people. If hundred thousand youths come up with solutions that can employ hundred people, how many people do we have that will be, that will get jobs? That's ten million. So those are the things we are looking out for. How can we amplify stories? How can we amplify innovation? How can we ensure that we, all of us do not wait for government jobs anymore? So this is what we are going to be doing together um, for August ten. And I think I'm I'm um, done with what I'm talking about. And also, I also want to let us know that we have different NGOs across Nigeria that will be partnering with on this um, Youth Day event. So it's not about one person. I know today you are seeing me. I'm sure the next town hall meeting, you are going to be seeing somebody else, maybe a male or a female, who is of, a member of the team, who is going to be um, taking the town hall meeting. Sometimes we'll tell you the partners we've got in. Another town hall meeting, we may tell you some of the challenges we are facing and your, and how we need your help. So everyone, I wanna urge us to, to stay active in our community. Believe that if we are going to make change happen, that it is up to youth. And please, let us not complain. Rather, let us look for solutions. Let us ask ourselves, how can we work together to ensure that Nigeria grows? How can we work together to ensure that our country is better? Because when we start thinking that way, growth will start happening for us. Also, I want to urge us to that we should not say, oh, I don't want to volunteer anymore. Because volunteering is very, very important. And for me, while I started volunteering for the SDGs in two thousand and fifteen during my youth service, it has taken me to different parts of Nigeria. It has also made me to meet different people from different parts of the world just because I started volunteering for the SDGs. So please, let us keep volunteering. Don't stop. Don't think that anybody is taking advantage of you. Rather, ask yourself, what skill am I learning? It was when I was volunteering, I learned how to write proposal. It was when I was volunteering, I learned how to better use um, PowerPoint presentation skills. And today, if you look at my CV, I have different skills because I volunteer. Fine, I have a day job right now, but it was all of these skills I acquired when I was volunteering that I use, that I presently use for my day job. So everyone, I wanna thank you for joining this live video. I'm going to be looking at the comments. Um, I'm going to be looking at the comments and see if there are questions. Yes, I agree with you, Free Me Lola, that youth needs to be employed. And for me, I think youth needs to come up with solutions to the unemployment rate in our nation. Yes, Ungazi is right, right, right. Solution in place of complaints. I agree with you totally. We need to look for solutions rather than complaining. Because when we find solutions, then all of us will grow together. So guys, I, I really wanna thank you for, for joining this um, town hall meeting. Does anybody have a question? There's um, I'm trying to look through if there are questions. Okay, so there are no questions from anyone. Thirty-three comments already, but no questions. Okay, Eric is asking, why are we here? Okay, so it's the Regional Dialogue Town Hall Meeting. And um, I'm, I started by telling every one of us why we are having the um, the Regional Youth Consultation across Nigeria, um, the aims and the objectives. Some of the things we've discussed, discussed here, I think you can re-watch it um, after I end the video. Okay, so thank you everyone for watching. And please let us believe um, in the power of young people to make change happen. There's always something we always say everywhere. We always talk about youth power. The power of young people, the power of young people, the power of young people to make change happen. That power is strong. Please, guys, let's work together. With collaboration, we are going to ensure that regional dialogue, it's a success. I am believing you, I'm believing in you, and I'm counting on you for us to make this happen. And guys, it's time to make history happen. Thank you for watching. If you have any questions, please be kind enough to drop your questions. If there are no questions, um, I think I'm gonna end this video right now and look through the timelines for people who will be asking questions after this. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, everyone who has joined us. Abraham, thank you for moderating. Ungazi, thank you for your contribution. Free Me Lola, thank you so much. You are doing an amazing job. Um, Ife, thank you. So, and Fumilala, thank you so much. You are doing an amazing job. Um Ife, thank you. So and happy. Graduation. We hope to um see you head more in Ibadan as we host the regional consultation. Yeah, I agree. Rabu, very interesting comment. That we keep talking about power, but those in real power do not give it. Nobody will give us power, guys. Rabu, nobody will give you power because power intersticates. Nobody will give you. You have to place a demand on power. And when you have that power, you need to learn how to share it. And that's what we'll be doing with the regional dialogue. We wanna share the power. We want everybody to understand that leadership is not something somebody brought from heaven. So if you want to learn how to lead, we are going to be hosting sessions. For everyone who said they want to be volunteers, so that they will learn how to lead. For us as young people, we need to learn how to share the power that we have. So the older ones may be selfish that they don't want to give power, but for us. We have to create a culture that shares this power. Anything you know how to do, share it. If you see an opportunity that will benefit other people, share it. Because when you are better, somebody else is better. We are all better together. Remember the saying, the African saying that says, a rich man. In, if you are the only rich man in a family of eight. Every other person in your family, they are poor and you are the only rich one. You are not rich, you are poor. Because everybody will be depending on you. But this time around, we wanna share the power that we have. Um Ikina, our governments in states supporting us with any form of logistics. Um the, the good part is that right now governments in states are not supporting us with any form of logistics. So we are working with NGO partners in different states. So for instance, you are in Enugu. So we have an NGO partner with the help of the Nigerian Network of NGO in Enugu that is going to be supporting us. I don't know if they are going to be giving us venue, but they are going to be telling us people that we can approach for venue. Either at a discount price or for free. So all of these things is to train us. So we learn how to, how to ask for help. So for instance, if, if nobody can give it to you, how do you get it? So sometimes you find um young people say, okay, so I remember I was going through the group and somebody was saying, oh, I need a job. I need a job. Um and one of the things I always say is that before you ask people outside, you need a job. Ask people inside, ask your friends, ask your family members, ask people in your church, people in your mosques. If you are, if you are an ID worshiper, ask people close to the shrine that, oh, please, do you know where I can get a job? Do you know somebody that is giving out a job? So all of those things, or you ask yourself, how can I help somebody to be better? By so doing, you will get a job. How, what skill do I have that I can apply to a certain situation? So that's what I would say. Well, we are going to get these venues ourselves. But then the civil society organization in your state will also be of support to you. So we will link you up with civil society organization in your state. Okay. Um yes, right, Ikina, that person that asked us that question, that how can we start a chapter of SDG in these of our states? So one of the things we are going to say is that, please just start. If you can gather five, ten, twenty people together and you educate yourself about the SDGs, it's a good way to start. We will, we are also creating a toolkit. The toolkit is not ready yet, but we are creating one that you can download from our website. On how to start a youth movement, how to start an SDG's chapter in your state. How to get resources for starting your SDG's chapter? What do I need to know if I'm starting an SDG's chapter in my state? So we are going to be creating that. So please, um Rabu, if you wanna be a volunteer, please go on our website. W W dot Nigeria Youth SDGs dot com um does O R G. There's a place that says twenty nineteen regional dialogue. So from there you can sign up to be a volunteer. I'm trying to look if there are other um questions. Um how are we to gain full growth, to carry out separate humanitarian acts in order to accomplish the goals? Okay, this is coming from Eric. So Eric, what we have to do is um, as I said earlier on, we are going to be creating two kits. Things that you can read, that would help you to grow. Another thing we are going to be doing, just as I've had the discussion with you today. Next time, I think um next week, we are going to be having somebody from India. Who is going to be telling us about the act of storytelling. So this guy um is on the advisory board of the Billam Melinda Gates Goalkeepers um Foundation. So he is one of my friends. He's going to be telling us about the act of storytelling next week. And somebody else also, um someone who is Nigerian, is also going to be teaching you how to um. How to um develop a career in international development. So this person has traveled all over the world, he has attended conferences, he has, he has grown um in, in, in international development. It's nice career. In fact, just last year, he was one of the winners of the Google Accelerator Program. Where its organization won two hundred thousand US dollars. So he's going to be teaching you how to develop a career in international development. So that's some of the things, um that's some of the things we are going to be providing for everyone here. Oh, Busola, nice question. Um we are, we are going to be creating a toolkit on this um for the Youth Day. One of the things we're also doing is that we are going to create a, a toolkit that will sit. Twenty, at least twenty actionable steps that you can take for SDGs in your community. Twenty steps under goal one, twenty steps under goal two, twenty steps under goal three, until goal seventeen. So imagine twenty times seventeen, that's a lot, over five hundred steps. That you can take, actionable steps that you can take for the SDGs in your community. We are going to be, the toolkit, we have all of those things. So just get ready. I know we are saying most of our plans is because of that if anybody has ideas on how we can go about this, you can suggest. That's why we are sharing all of our ideas. Remember, as young people, we need to learn how to share power. Somebody can have an idea, another person can let, can know how to produce that idea. In collaboration, we'll make great things happen. So guys, um I wanna thank you so much for joining this um. Town hall meeting. Yeah, it's a town hall meeting. All our community members, all our SDG advocates, Ungazi joined us from Cross River. Um Busola is in um, is in Lagos. I know Abraham is in Abuja. Um Femi is in Lagos. I don't know where Rabu is based in, but probably in the north. Um Ikina is in Enugu. Um Fumi is in Lagos. By the way, Fumi is doing a lot of good work. With our website that is called o, o, opportunities dot com. So they pour a lot of opportunities to young people. Um Ife is in Ibadon. Ife just graduated from um, from university and she's feeling really good. Um she's going to be helping us in Ibadon. Um I don't know where Eric is based. Eric, thank you so much for joining. Mahmoud, thank you so much for joining. Um who else joined? If you say hello, I can see you. Um thank you so much, everyone, for joining and I wanna wish us a very good. Um happy public holiday. It's Democracy Day in Nigeria. Let's not forget that we need to um. Oh. What did you say, Ungazi? I can't. Isaiah, um we are going to send you an email of the person who is heading the SDG's activity in Rivers. And by the way, you can also link up with Ungazi because Ungazi's organization is based in Rivers. And they are, Ungazi is one of the people who is helping us put together the um, the Youth Day Dialogue. Ungazi is helping us with Rivers, Akwaibom, Benue, yeah. So guys, thank you so much. Hello, China. Hi, Faith. Um so thank you everyone for joining. It's been great meeting all of you. I can't wait to meet everybody in person, maybe not this year, maybe in twenty twenty. Because one of the things we're also going to do in twenty twenty, let me blow your mind, guys. In twenty twenty, we are going to have um I think a five days youth summit. So for five days, we are going to have a youth summit in twenty twenty and that's why we are doing this. We wanna know if all of these things should happen. Imagine having five hundred young people from different parts of Nigeria talking about the SDGs for five days. We can make this work, guys. If we can make this work. Um Faith, you have to link up with Ungazi. Um Ungazi is working in um Akwaibom also. So guys, thank you so much. It's been fun hanging out with every one of you. Yes, yes, they are like-minded. Yes, they are like-minded, guys, Eric. Let's open up our minds. Let's open up our minds. We can all work together. Our youth are not selfish. We are collaborating together. We are sharing the power we have together. So guys, with your own little action, if you have ideas of how we can make this work. Please just send an email to youth at Nigeria Youth SDGs dot O R O G. If you are good with graphics design, let us know because we need people to help us with designs. Um anything you are good at, if you are good with facilitating, let us know. If you are a storyteller, let us know. Anything you are good at, let us know because we need everybody. Thank you so much, guys, and do have a fantastic Democracy Day celebration. Please, Nigeria is counting on you. Thank you so much. Youth power will help us through. Take care, everybody, and have a good evening. Bye.